Invite everyone who desires to please stand for a moment of silence for personal prayer or whatever else you may want to think about, and then please remain standing after that for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for July 12th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. These meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Rono County's website at www.ronocountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captions, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And please turn your cell phones off or place them on silent. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Item B on our agenda, request to postpone, add, or change the order of agenda items. Does any board member have a request to postpone, add, or change the agenda? Mr. Kaywood?
No changes.
Ms. Nash?
No changes, Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you. Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. C1 is a resolution recognizing Commander Richard M. Poindexter for his exemplary service to Rono County. Please come up. Mr. Kaywood?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's definitely my privilege to be before you this afternoon with Commander Poindexter. And I will have to say, as county administrator, this is the favorite thing, my favorite thing that I do is bring in employees before you in this fashion. And it is hard to believe that this does represent, I guess, our third time doing this on a quarterly basis. And today, we're recommending that you recognize, again, I did not know your first name was Richard, like me, I always call you Commander or Mike, but Commander Poindexter, and I got to know Mike as part of my work on the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project where, I guess, after his promotion to Commander, he was working with that assignment as well. And unlike most of the folks that we have brought before you and probably will in the future, you'll notice that the resolution is very short. And that's for a very good reason, because a lot of what I know Commander Poindexter to have dealt with so effectively are usually things that are behind the scenes, often very sensitive and very confidential. But throughout my tenure with the county, I've known that when he is working on something, it's going to be done thoroughly, it's going to be done right, it's going to take the amount of time that it needs to take, but no less and no longer, and that when his work is done, we're done. And I have never come back and had a need to, you know, follow behind or make any changes to anything, because you just know that when he's been assigned a task, it is going to be done just to a standard of excellence. So it's really my privilege to bring Commander Poindexter before you today for your recognition, and I just want to thank him for all his many years of dedicated service to the police department. I think Chief Hall has just a couple of brief words as well.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to recognize one of our excellent employees, and then Mr. Kaywood. You know, selecting Mike for this recognition, you know, as he alluded, Mike served us for 28 years in a variety of assignments, many operational, but more recently administrative, which, you know, has required him to do some very difficult things. He's done very, very well. Since April, he has been serving as Acting Assistant Chief for Administration while our normal Acting Assi-- or Normal Assistant Chief is, you know, out with some leave issues. And he's been doing an excellent job of that as well. So we appreciate, Mike, your hard work.
Thank you.
Like to say anything?
Sure.
Mr. Kaywood, board members, I greatly appreciate the recognition, but this would not be possible without the support of my family, my friends, and my coworkers. I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Rono County, and I appreciate the recognition. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Thought you were going to forget. Resolution recognizing Commander Richard M. Poindexter for his exemplary service to Rono County. Whereas in July 1994, Richard M. Poindexter was hired as a police officer for the Rono County Police Department, where he has served in an exemplary manner. And whereas Commander Poindexter was promoted to Sergeant in December 2003 and Commander in December 2014, and has supervised a variety of units within the police department since that time. And whereas Commander Poindexter was assigned as the April Platoon Commander in October 2017, when he was also designated as the Deputy Incident Commander for the Police Department response to the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project. During this assignment, he helped plan the county's response to the pipeline, working with county administration and other government officials, both within and outside of Rono County. Whereas Commander Poindexter was assigned as Commander of Professional Standards Unit in October of 2018, where he was, has been responsible for recruiting and selection of employees, policy development, accreditation, compliance, and internal affairs investigation, amongst other duties. And whereas Commander Poindexter led the revision of the police department's use of force policies and transition to the sixth edition standards of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And whereas Commander Poindexter led an employee group charged with developing guidelines for the implementation of the police department's pay step plan in 2021, and subsequently implemented those guidelines. And whereas Commander Poindexter has been assigned to investigate a number of significant and complex employee issues and disciplinary matters, which were done in a thorough, professional, and efficient manner, earning recognition and praise from county administration, Human Resources Department, and the county attorney's office. And whereas Commander Poindexter was appointed as Acting Assistant Chief of Police for Administration in April 2022, where he has successfully and effectively supervised the Professional Standards Unit, Rono County Criminal Justice Academy, Services Division, and Crime Prevention Coordinator. And whereas Commander Poindexter's 28 years of service to the Rono County Police Department have contributed greatly to the safety of our citizens and effectiveness of the police department. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rono County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Rono County to Commander Richard M. Poindexter for his dedicated and exemplary service to Rono County, and further the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for continued success in the future.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Any comments from board members?
So, Mike, I would just like to say, as I listened to the resolution, the number of professional things you've done with our department, I truly appreciate that, but I can also go back quite a number of years in your earlier days and my earlier days of fire and rescue, and I will say even 20 years ago, your professionalism has always been there, but you're also good to have fun with. So, but I will say that you were always a great officer on the road, and I could tell by everything she talked about in the resolution, you've continued to provide that professionalism throughout our department, and I truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment that we truly appreciate your service to the citizens of Rono County, and thank you for your service, thank you for all that you've done, and keep on keeping on with the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to send my congratulations to you to keep up, keep up the great work and pass it on to some of the younger folks in the department, because I'm sure they look up to you as a mentor in more ways than just one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and thank you so much, Richard, for recognizing Mike. And Mike, it's, we learned a little bit about you, I haven't had a chance to meet you, reading the resolution, and you have done quite a bit, don't know you like, like Mr. Peters, but, you know, I do see there that you, you've kept the effectiveness of the police department in order, and that, that's a big, that's a big task, so appreciate that a whole lot. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have, you have been given a lot of very difficult tasks. Pipeline was a headache, I think it's still a headache, and it's going to come back. The, anybody who handles IA, I sympathize with you, that's always tough. The internal personnel problems are always a challenge, and they're very hard, and those are terribly difficult tasks. And then the work through the new pay plan, and listening to what all was involved, I can see you probably lost all your hair after that. But, but thank you, thank you for your service, and I really think it's because of people like you that we have a great police department, and you help keep our citizens safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could come down and grab the picture. So, taking pictures. Would you like to hold your resolution? Put you in the middle? You can arrest her at any time. The next item on our agenda is a briefing. Item D1 is a briefing to update the board on the grant application regarding school resource officers, SROs. Mr. Kaywood and Chief Hall?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The bulk of this presentation will be given by our police chief, I think Debbie's going to get this on the screen. I just have an introductory slide, and then I will do a closing slide, so hopefully this will appear momentarily. And as we shared with you at your last meeting, we told you we intended to come back and talk about the application that we intend to make to the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for a grant for additional SROs for our county schools. This grant opportunity was announced back on June 22nd, and these applications are due this Friday, so obviously a very limited grant window for us, much shorter than what we would normally see. And this was due to the additional appropriation that was done for this SRO function by the Commonwealth and the recently approved Commonwealth budget. And as you all know, today, in our county schools, SRO services are provided by a blend of our police officers and also folks from our sheriff's office. At present, we have a total of 10 positions assigned within the police department for this function. That's supplemented by two folks in our elementary schools from the sheriff's department, in addition to another sheriff's department deputy who has been working with the school construction projects, as we've had many capital projects going along around the school. And one thing I want to point out to the board before the chief presents, as part of this grant application that you'll see shortly, we are going to be recommending creating some part-time police positions to serve in this capacity within our elementary schools. And as part of this process, as we, as we move forward to recruitment, we are going to take a look at our classification and compensation practices for what will now be a larger collection of part-time law enforcement personnel, both in the sheriff's office and the police department, so we can ensure that we have similar pay for similar functions, and we want to make sure that's handled in a consistent manner. And so that may result in some changes to some of the pay of our existing folks. And the final thing I'll point out along that line is when we did do our compensation grade step plan for public safety, one of the areas that we unfortunately did not look at at that time was the compensation of the part-time law enforcement staff that we do have, so this is an excellent opportunity for us to ensure that we're in the right place in the market, especially as this is a statewide issue, and many, many of our neighbors are also recruiting for these same positions, so we certainly want to hold on to the fakes we have and those roles, and then add to it so we can provide additional services in our schools. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Kaywood said, I'm going to walk you through the SRO grant process and what we've prepared in terms of a plan and a proposal at this point. So just quickly on the agenda, I've got a couple of introductory things to share with you. We'll talk about the grant requirements themselves. As Mr. Kaywood suggested, this part-time police officer ID is new for us, so there's some work that we're going through to make sure we're doing that appropriately. There was, of course, the grant application and budget itself, as well as a number of expenses that will not be covered by the grant, not when we do this, and then I believe Mr. Kaywood's going to come back with the next steps and conclusions. So just by way of the introduction, let me give you an update of where we are with our permanent SROs. We have 10 positions for that to cover the secondary schools. Due to staffing shortages, in the last school year, we had a total of six actually in the schools. So the little bit of good news, I am anticipating being able to put eight into schools when they start back in August. I will tell you, that is a tenuous eight. So kind of good news, bad news. The reason we can get a couple back in is that our attrition so far this year amongst sworn officers has been really the lowest since I've been here, four left during the first half of the year. That's really, really good news, and I think the pay plan has quite a bit to do with that. Fortunately, we also don't have six to eight people a day out with COVID anymore, so that's really helpful. The bad news side of this is the applicant pool is still extremely limited. We graduated one recruit the week before last. We have one recruit in the current academy that will graduate in October. Today, I have 10 actual vacancies, which means I need to hire 15 for a class we're going to start next month. We're anticipating five or six. Those recruits that start next month will not be off of field training until the next school year is over, end of May. So, you know, what we have in the pipeline is very, very thin at this point due to the applicant pool. You know, the next item, I believe, we're going to be considering some additional pay issues that, you know, I'm crossing my fingers and hoping might help us to attract a certified officer or two full-time to come in, and that would really be helpful to us right now. But in any event, the grant solicitation for new SROs allows us to put in for either full-time or part-time officers. Given why I just told you about full-time hiring, doesn't really make a lot of sense to try to put in for a full-time officer that we would not be able to hire anytime soon. So we have made the decision to apply for part-time police officers. I also believe that that is going to be a very limited applicant pool, but it is a different applicant pool than people that would be wanting the full-time work. It would have to be DCJUST certified within a period of time and with some law enforcement experience, but, you know, we're hopeful that we might be able to attract a few to do this. The grant includes salary and benefits for coverage during school hours for the part-time positions. It does not include equipment, supplies, training, those types of things, those are the non-grant expenditures that I'll be talking about very shortly. The officers must be law enforcement certified and have three years of law enforcement experience. In my mind, that means they have worked three years in a policing capacity. So we're looking for people that have worked in the street before, that have handled a range of police issues, because as we know, any of those things could happen in our schools, and we have to have people that are experienced and ready to handle that. Must have an MOU with the schools, we already have that, so that's kind of a box that we check very easily. The grant requires that we assign the officers, even the part-time officers, to a specific school. Now, we're asking for eight, we have 16 elementary schools, there is some flexibility written to the grant to allow us to have those officers cover some other things. So our intention would be, as we hire people, we will work with Dr. Nice and his staff to figure out how best to do that, keeping us within the limitations of the grant. Dr. Nice and I have talked, we feel like we can, we can get that worked out. They must perform law enforcement activities, law-related education, and informal mentoring. So we have to submit an activity plan with the grant that essentially describes what these folks are going to be doing. That includes security functions, traffic control, potentially traffic enforcement. We're going to work with Dr. Nice and his staff about, you know, what would be appropriate things for a police officer to teach in the elementary school, that's, that's new ground. So we'll need a little help from the schools on that, he's assured me that we can, that we can get that worked out, and we will have to provide activity reports to that. So it's a grant, we're going to have to report back to them on what the officers are doing in the schools. And then finally, it is a four-year grant period based on available funding. This year, it's 100% salary and benefits, there is a 20% match requirement in the out years, two, three, and four, unless, unless I guess the legislature decides to, you know, make it better, again, which I think pretty much what they did this year. So as I said, we have to select schools. Commander Pascoe, who supervises our Special Operations Division and the SROs, simply looked at the 16 elementary schools and picked the eight that had the highest amount of police activity in the last year. Okay, so let me, having said that, let me say that none of them have a very high level of police activity, so I'm not trying to cause any fear here. None of them have very high levels, he just went with the ones that had the highest, they're in no particular order. So as I said, they will have some flexibility to assist with the other schools, and geographically probably the best way to work that out. I don't know that we'll get, you know, one, a grant for eight positions, or we'll be able to find enough people to do it. I'm very confident that we will not get eight all at one time. So as we were, are able to hire people, we will work with the school staff to determine what might be the priority areas where they would like to see those officers assigned first, and then kind of work our way through from there.
Chief, let me interrupt you. I think I saw, I don't know, a week or two in the media that one of the school board members was asking the town of Vinton police to patrol or guard, look at...
Hunt us and horn.
Yeah. It is...
I am not familiar with that.
But to my, to my understanding, the grant, they could not apply for the grant to do one of these, because even though the schools are in their jurisdiction, they, Rono County has control.
Right.
That's my understanding, and I could be wrong.
They do routinely check on the schools that are in their area, and I'm sure that they'll continue to do that. I think that if somehow they were able to obtain an officer for a school in Vinton, we would just adjust our plan in terms of whereabouts. I think, Mr. Mahoney, you're accurate, that we have to apply as Rono County for this grant for our schools.
I guess I was just concerned from a command and control perspective, not wanting to have a fumble. And, you know, I know you have a good working relationship with the PD and the town of Vinton, but just one more layer of communication if there was an issue.
Right. We work every day with the Vinton Police Department, there are officers and their staff. Occasionally, we have to respond with them to critical incidents that occur in the town. Sometimes they respond with us to critical incidents that occur in the county, so I think we've got to work through that pretty easily.
Interject here briefly, Mr. Chairman, I have spoken to the town manager about this issue, and he does, he indicates that the town police force does provide assistance such as traffic control, they do have some limited presence in the school within the town, but, but they are not interested in getting into the SRO business, so to speak, and they're aware that we're making this application, and, you know, we intend, through working with the sheriff's department, to cover that function, and I think they intend to continue the, the presence that they've had for many, many years within the town.
Thank you.
All right, so, now as I said, we have never hired part-time police officers before, so there's some work for us in implementing that kind of thing in the police department. We've done quite a bit so far, there'll still be some details that we have to work out. As Mr. Kaywood suggested, pay and classification will be an important issue. You are probably aware that the city police have advertised for SROs at $30 to $40 an hour, and are hiring, as I understand it, within that range. We took a look at our current SROs, who are all at the PO4 level of our department. At today's salary, they are making between 30 and 35. Projecting to next fiscal year, that will bump up to 34 to 39 if it's the same people. So I think that the mid-30s is an appropriate place based on the market. Benefits are also important. As this proposal has been working its way through, I will tell you that at the beginning, I was pretty skeptical that, you know, we'd hear much interest. We have heard from three people, two of them are retired from our department, one is getting ready to retire from another department, who have said that they are very interested in this, and they have mentioned the benefits as, as part of it. So a little bit surprised by that, but in a good way, if our goal is to get some folks into, into our schools.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Certainly.
So what would happen with these officers now, when school is out? What happens?
The SROs that we have full-time or the part-timers that we would hire?
The part-timers that we have here, that you, that you have on this slide?
We would not have part-time work for them presently during the time that school is out. So the, the assignment is 180 days of the school year. We've been discussing the benefit issues and establishing some minimum required hours for folks to qualify for that, which I think would be appropriate to do. We were tossing around 20 hours a week. If you, if you factor that around 52 weeks, that's 1,040, that would take up a good chunk of the school year for someone to, to hit it, but apparently there are some people out there that are willing to work, you know, those kind of hours. I think there may also be some that, that don't, and then wouldn't qualify for any kind of benefit beyond that day.
How many hours a day would they be at the school?
Eight. You're getting a little ahead of me.
Do what?
You're getting a little ahead of me.
Well, I have, I have a little bit of a problem with the part-time.
Okay.
And I guess my, my thought is, you know, I prefer to see full-time officers, and I had this conversation with Mr. Greenway, my cohort on the school board yesterday. I am glad to hear they would have to have the same training as another police officer, but I mean, I guess, as I, as I said to Tim yesterday, I guess in my fire and rescue mind, you know, God forbid something happens. I want to make sure that person on the inside, that's our point person, they're the ones telling us where we need to be, where we're not to be, what's actually happening, and to make sure that person is adequately trained to do that, and also be under the command of the Rono County Police.
Right.
That's been a little bit of my hesitation with this. I support the SRO program, but my question, my concern is not having full-time officers that maybe yearly, you know, the off, the different officer rotates through the school, but that would also kind of beef up our needs on your side as well.
Right, so if you'll indulge me on a couple of those issues, I'm going to go through them. So, if you'll indulge me on a couple of those issues, I'm going to go through them. I will, however, agree with you that if I had my preference, we would do this through hiring full-time police officers, just like we have done for years. Unfortunately, we are not in a position to be able to do that and get somebody into a school in the upcoming school year. And frankly, it may be several years before we sort of get out of the full-time deficit that we're in to be able to get to a full-time capacity. It would be, I think, advantageous if, sorry guys, if down the road, you know, we could get to that point, you know, for all the reasons you mentioned. However, outside of, you know, our need to, you know, figure out some paying classification, the next step in this is what does DCGS require to keep a police officer certification? Someone who has left a law enforcement agency as a certified officer, you know, if they just sort of immediately left, if somebody, say, retired and decided to come to us, it's relatively quick because they're currently certified. If they've left their agency for a longer period of time, within 24 months, they can take 40 hours of in-service training and get their DCGS certification back. If it's between two years and five years, they have to do a little bit more. At a five-year window, you have to go through the academy. So, that's really the window that we're talking about. If someone's been gone more than five years, that, they're not going to do that, and we're not going to want to do that. We'd hire full-time if we could for that. So, that's the DCGS piece for recertification. A part-time officer would also have to complete the same mandatory in-service training required by DCGS, which is 40 hours over two-year cycle. We routinely exceed those hours for our officers, and we would do that for the part-time officers because of our accreditation requirements, which do provide us, you know, some hurdles, but I think they're the appropriate things to do. So, under our accreditation requirements, the hiring process must be the same as full-time personnel. So, a part-time officer would have to take the agility test, the medical test, the written test, the psychological test, just as any other officer we would hire. We also must apply the same selection criteria, so we can't curve the test. We can't put a ladder next to a five-foot wall. Right? It has to be the same and would be the same. And finally, and I think very importantly, all of the training has to be the same as we require for our full-time personnel. So, we exceed that 40 hours every two years, you know, and we're doing things like firearms, use of force, de-escalation, CIT, of course, in this case, active shooter, and SRO training would be very, very important for anything that our regular officers get that's required the part-time officer would have to get. At the hiring point, that means that they have to be up to speed on all of our policy and procedure, all of our weapon systems, everything that we do currently. And we would have to judge candidate by candidate what it would take to do that. So, a retiree from our agency is going to be easier than a retiree from someplace else. The other thing we will have to do, to some degree, is a field training process because we do that for not just brand-new officers, but for certified officers that come to us. We're working through that a little bit with our accreditation folks to see what kind of leeway we have. Generally, when we hire a certified officer, we give them 160 hours, or basically a month, of field training. Again, if it was our retiree relatively recently, they probably don't need that much. This would be needed to learn our computer systems, our report-writing systems, you know, our processes, and to show that they can handle the incidents that a police officer has to handle in the field that could happen in a school. So, we want to make sure of that. We would probably also, we just started to talk about this, give them some amount of time with an experienced SRO in a school before we put them out by themselves in a school, which would seem to make some sense. And we have to maintain the same level of training moving forward. So, hopefully, that would mitigate some of your concerns, Mr. Peters, on the training end. But you are absolutely right. We expect these folks to do the same law enforcement work that we expect of any other Rona County officer. They're going to wear the same uniform, the same badge, have the same responsibility and authority, and we expect them, in this assignment, to actually be working. This isn't something where they can sit in a school on a stool all day, wait for something to happen. We expect them to be conducting law enforcement work and other things that are required by the grant. So, while I do show your preference for full-time, I do think that this is a workable option for us. So, to the numbers, and I have to thank Finance and Ms. Owens for doing the math because that's not really why I became a police officer. I think the most important number up there is the grant application would be for a total of $491,617 in the first year. That's what we'd be putting in for today. There are several assumptions there. One is that it's eight officers, one per school. I do think that as we get into this, there could be a possibility that we have some applicants that say, hey, I'm really interested in doing this part-time SRO thing, but maybe I don't want to work 40 hours a week. That might want to work less. So, it could be that to cover eight schools, we need 10 or 11 SROs. The grant doesn't really allow us to write it that way, but the money, I think, essentially is the same because we'd be paying them essentially the same. It's just something that we have to work through as this moves along. I do think that the $35 amount that's been used is appropriate, and as somebody asked me earlier, it's based on eight hours per day, 180-day school year. So, you know, we look at a school day being six and a half hours, seven and a half? Okay. We've got to have a little bit of time for them to get to a police department location, get a car, get to the school. We would like them to be there for the opening and closing of school, which is probably the two most critical times. Eight hours seems to be the number that will accomplish that. So, those are the numbers for the grant. The non-grant expense projections that I mentioned, I think the important one's right now, the first year, because we've got the upfront cost of getting this started. The selection process cost is the written testing and medical testing, psychological testing, times those eight applicants. Equipment, uniforms, bulletproof vest, gun belt, weapon systems, everything that we issue to a police officer. We actually pared this down a little bit. You know, for instance, a part-time school resource officer probably does not need a preliminary breath test, at least I hope not. You know, so we tried to look at the things that they would need and the environment that they're going to be working to save a little bit on that one. The training is estimated based on having to do probably 40 hours of training and some field training with everybody. In some cases, it could be a little bit lower. Vehicle maintenance is based on essentially keeping some of our higher-mileage cars in the fleet. As they rotate out for a new car, we would keep serviceable, older cars in the fleet, one per school. Talking to General Services, that's about a $4,400 a year fuel and maintenance price tag. I had talked to them about this, and they're starting to look at what the fleet looks like and what we anticipate coming out in order to have some cars for this. And I believe Mr. Kay was working with the sheriff on providing some cars for him as well in the same manner. So, that leaves us with $190,400 of non-budgeted, non-grant expenses in year one. The subsequent years is obviously lower. We tried to factor in, well, one of the $4,400 per car every year, plus some time for training and miscellaneous equipment replacement, that type of thing. So, there's the summary. You see that the match is included in there. I believe that we will probably be able to use, in the subsequent years, the training and equipment costs as part of the match to reduce, you know, the county match in the second year is 101, five. Training and equipment's 52. I think that if we get the grant, that will probably mitigate some of that. So, I believe that is my last slide, and Mr. Kaywood is going to return before we take any more questions.
Okay. And just to wrap up, as we mentioned at the beginning, these grant applications are due on Friday. So, again, very limited time. And just to stress the fact that this is a reimbursable grant, so we're only eligible to receive money back is we're able to attract people and actually use the money in keeping with the terms of the grant. And when we come back to you on August 9th and 23rd, what we scheduled, we should get approval back from DCGS on August 1st. We would give you an update on kind of where we landed with that look at common benefits, also a proposed funding plan, particularly in year one. And again, we have to look at that 190 in there is probably on the high end because, again, as the chief mentioned, we don't anticipate being able to immediately hire that many folks. So, we'll give you a little more detail on that. And then I believe the chief's plan is, assuming that we do receive some of all the grant that we've requested, and we do first reading on August 9th, we could go ahead and post the positions at that time so that we would at least have some positive feedback from the board, and we wouldn't bring anybody on board until you've done second reading. Again, tentatively scheduled for August the 23rd, with, you know, the earliest testing window being in early September, and then with the hope that we would get officers into the school the latter part of the year. And probably the one thing I want to close on, just to go back, as the chief has indicated to what Mr. Peters said, because I started out in exactly the same place, I think we would all strongly agree that we would ultimately like to have our police officers, our police force, be full-time folks. I do think that's going to be a building process. And the number-one reason I believe that is because I think, you know, what we have historically done and what our goal should be is that an SRO is a police officer who is assigned to that duty for a period of time, so they do that full range of police work. So, while this, the part-time folks will not operate in that fashion, I do think that's our best path for now. But, you know, looking back on this, hopefully, let's say, 10 years from now, I would hope that this is an intermediate step to a program that looks like an expansion of what we have today, when hopefully the labor market's a little more conducive, and we've had some time to build to that. So, I just want to personally say that as well, that I strongly agree that that is our, the end state that we should look toward, but I think it's going to be a few years for us to get there. And with that, the chief and I would be happy to take any questions or receive any feedback that you may have.
Sure. I just want to applaud staff's efforts on this short timeline to be studying this the last part of June, realizing the grants were out there. It was a surprise that they were due so quickly. Unlike most state grants that don't even have a process, this one did. The two-week turnaround was challenging, and I want to personally thank staff for everything they've done. I think this is a beginning in part-time, and I fully support the part-time effort to start with because, as this department is suffering recruitment of full-time officers, so are many others across the Commonwealth. I was at a meeting the other day at the I-81 corridor, and we understand they're short 350 state troopers, which is why the speed mitigation program is far behind schedule on I-81. So, applaud the efforts and thank you for everything that everyone did to contribute to this, especially Ms. Owens. While Mr. Kaywood was out of town last week, there was a lot of work going on behind the scenes. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody involved with this as well. And as I've said before, you know, it's not the perfect solution to me, but I do support the part-time, as you've explained it. And I'd also say that it may help bring some new folks to our area who may have retired in Loudoun County or somewhere else, looking for a little slower pace of life, and, you know, you never know. It may bring them down to Rona. I guess I want to go back to the comment I had made earlier, and I want to first be very clear before I ask my question, that I have the utmost respect for the sheriff and his deputies. But as we're going through this process, I do have the question of what I illustrated before. Are our sheriff deputies trained at the same level as our police officers? And the reason I'm asking the question is, again, God forbid something were to happen. That person on the inside is going to be the one giving the police department, incoming units, fire and rescue, given everybody the size of what's going on, is everybody trained the same regardless of whether it's the sheriff or the police department?
Well, I can't speak for sheriff. An SRO has to be law enforcement certified through DCGS as a minimum standard.
So, regardless of whether they're with the police sheriff's department or not, they have to have the standard?
They have to have the DCGS certification.
Okay.
Ms. Hooker? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make one quick comment because I know that there was some discussion about the difference in pay between what the sheriff's department is getting and what the proposal is here. And it's my understanding that there's going to be an effort to make sure it's equalized between departments. There should not be a difference in pay for the same work, just a different uniform on.
Yes, and we have met with the sheriff's office and discussed that. Again, that's something we would update you on further when we come back in August, but I don't see a situation where essentially the sheriff's department and police department would be advertising for the same function in Rona County at a different rate of pay. But then in addition to that, and the thing that I mentioned in my opening that I talked to the sheriff about is just taking a look at the compensation for his other part-time law enforcement people who are not part of our great step pay system, just to make sure that we think that we have them in the right place. Because, again, what we're not trying to do is just move people around. That doesn't help us any. So, if his part-time people all now want to become SROs and not do the work that they're doing currently, that would create an issue for the county. So, we think we can fairly easily resolve that, and fortunately, this is a very small cohort of employees in terms of the overall county. I think maybe he has about 16 total part-time staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Effer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the events leading up to where we are today, unfortunate tragedy in Texas. So, I agree with all the other board members. This is a great start. A lot of effort has come about to put this together. So, we picked eight schools. What happens with this seven other schools? What's the long term? What's going to happen with those that do or don't have coverage at this point?
I think the way we look at this in the short run, as the chief indicated, we're making a grant application for up to eight spots. Now, if these grants work the way they have in the past, we assume there will be other opportunities to request additional folks. I think this program works very similar to the SAFER Grant Program that we use in fire and rescue. So, that's not intended to be limited to that. But at the moment, there are two folks, deputies, working for the sheriff's department that try to spend some time across all 16 elementary schools. So, as we're able to assign our personnel from the police department, that would reduce the universe of schools that the folks that the sheriff has and will try to hire are moving among. And that's one of the differences where, you know, for this grant program, we do have to specify a school. The way the sheriff's program is working today, he has more flexibility to move people around. So, we would work together, I think, to try to make the maximum utilization of the people that we have at any point in time, with the ultimate goal being that I think we would come back a number of times, maybe in future years, and just as we do with fire and rescue, kind of gradually add staff, try to use the grant window to help pay for that four-year window. And then, you know, but long-term, that does present a significant financial obligation for the county, which is something we'll have to look at, just as we do with our firefighter personnel.
Yeah, just to follow up, Mr. Mahoney. So, Chief Hall, you said, it sounded like this is very fluid. We got to get the grant, okay? Then we got to find people to hire, and so we don't know if we'll have that by the fall or not. I think it's...
Correct. You know, we are aware of three people who aren't working for the sheriff.
Right.
Three people that aren't working for us right now that are interested in this position. Two of them are retired from the Rona County Police Department. I think that would allow us to process them perhaps a little faster than maybe the third person who is from another agency. Realistically, it's going to take us some time to get them through a testing process, get a background investigation done, get the training done to get them into school. We'll do that as efficiently as we can, and, you know, we'll do it as officers are ready. So, we're not going to wait to have eight and drop them all at the same time. Somebody gets through and is ready to go and ready to be hired, we'll work with Dr. Nice on, okay, where's this one going? And number two comes along, and then where's this one go? And try to implement, you know, with as many as one the grant might provide and two is we might be able to hire.
Okay.
I have a question about the grant. I'm assuming, I'm guessing, that it is a specific sum as stated by the General Assembly. So, is this going to be a race that all the various localities through the Commonwealth are going to submit their applications, and then, oh my goodness, DCJS looks at this and they have more applications and requests for money than the money appropriated? So, you may not get what we're asking for. You're going to get half or a third or whatever. Do you have a sense of where the magnitude?
I'm having a little bit of a hard time sort of figuring out the DCGS grants and which one this is. Interestingly, about two, three days before this solicitation was published, I was in a meeting with the Secretary of Public Safety with some other police chiefs, and we had a chance to have a discussion. And one of the questions I asked was, you know, hey, there's a bunch of money in the upcoming budget for SROs. Is there a timeline for getting the applications out there? And he told me that they hadn't established a timeline yet. Well, two or three days later, there's a grant solicitation, and it's worded sort of oddly, it sort of references second solicitation. So, I'm not 100% sure if this isn't leftover money from the last fiscal year for this round. I think they put, Mr. Mahoney... I think they put, Mr. Nor, 45 million?
They put 23 million in each of the next two-year biennium. So it's a total of 45 or 46 million dollars. So there's lots of money out there. I would say to you this, that a lot, a lot of municipalities may not know about these or might miss the date because it was such an aggressive date.
Right.
The last date was March 15th of this year. So I think the early bird might get the applications approved quicker and I think will bode well to get those in. In fact, it wouldn't, I wouldn't, it wouldn't bother me one bit if y'all want to up that numbers. I indicated to Richard in separate conversations. However, you know, this is a great plan to start with. And I think there's plenty of money. And if it's a four-year grant program, it tells me there's probably going to be around for the next two-year biennium in '25, '26, '27 timeframe.
And we can certainly submit subsequent-
Right.
-grant applications as they put additional solicitation down.
Exactly. And they may be another period this fall or maybe-
A couple months from now, we can see it again.
You know, it's like, it's like the school grants that, that need to be reviewed. In fact, I asked somebody in VACO on this program and was told they hadn't developed the information yet. And it's the same answer you got. And then someone found the, the early date of the 15th of July. Now, on the education side, there's plenty of money there too for school construction grants, yet I'm being told that they haven't come up with how that program's going to be administered. So that could probably take two, three months. Hopefully that doesn't have an August 1st deadline or something like that. And if it does, I sure hope someone finds it because I haven't found it.
Well, I, I just think if, if we can pursue this initiative, that's great. Plaudits to the, the staff. Thank you, Chief. Let's get this application in. I just, the cynic in me worries that future General Assembly is going to cut out the money and chop us off at the knees once we start the program in two years after the next biennium. The money disappears. But we'll worry about that two years from now.
I should probably acknowledge that we put, not like Ms. Owens, but finance, HR, general services, quite a few people under a fairly tight timeline last week for, hey, we need to, to know this so that we can, one, have the grant done and have the presentation ready for you. So their work is much appreciated as well.
Just to make sure, when you press, press the button to send the grant and you get a reply that it's been received, because if you don't, it might be like someone else we know thought they'd pressed the button one day and it didn't happen and they didn't get the paperwork in Richmond. So you might have someone who'll stand by to drive it down there.
We will not be waiting until 4:30 on Friday.
Right, exactly.
Thank you. Item E, first reading of ordinance is Z1. Ordinance appropriating funds in the amount of $2,528,236 for fiscal year 2022, 2023 operations budget and approval of an amended classification plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023, for Reno County, Virginia. Ms. Gerhardt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This item is to discuss the proposed fiscal year 22, 23 operating budget amendment. On May 10th, the board adopted the fiscal year 22, 23 operating budget with revenues of a little over $218.4 million. At that time, we were still monitoring the pending legislation as related to the local portion of the grocery sales tax and adopted our budget with a local portion excluded from our revenues. In addition, there was uncertainty related to the sheriff's comp board funded positions and the increase in our HB 599 funding, which helps to offset the cost of our police department. We had shared with the board, we would revisit our projected revenues once the Commonwealth adopted their biennial budget, which finally happened in late June. After analyzing the final Commonwealth budget, we are recommending to amend our projected revenues by a little over $2.5 million, bringing our total operating budget for fiscal year 22, 23 to $221 million. Here is a summary of the proposed increase in expenditures due to our proposed increase in revenues. $985,728 of this increase will be shared with the schools based on our revenue sharing formula, which represents 41.072% of the 2.4 million increase in local grocery tax. And then the next few slides will share more details on the other categories that are shown here. The county is in year two of a three-year commitment for the implementation of step plans for our public safety employees. Our goal is to have everyone in their proper step by July 1 of 2023. For this year, which again is year two, we originally adopted an anchor salary of $42,000 for the sheriff's office, which is the new starting salary as adopted by the comp board. However, in order to be competitive, we are proposing to change the anchor salary for the sheriff to $44,100 and increase the other public safety employees as shown. Once the anchor salary is changed, the other steps within the plans are adjusted accordingly and the increases to salaries for our employees will be reflected on their first paycheck in August, which is August 5th. Non-public safety employees will receive an additional 1% based on their salary as of June 2022, which will increase their cost of living raise from 5% as approved on May 10th to 6%, which is comparable to the school board approved raise of 6%. However, the schools will be bringing an amendment to be approved at our next board meeting and they will be requesting an additional 1% to increase their raise to 7%. Increases to the operating budget for the registrar were approved at the May 24th board meeting in the amount of $263,788. These changes include two new positions, which have been included in the revised class plan that is attached to this board report, along with rising costs in several categories as a result of policy changes for security, absentee voting, reporting requirements, as well as the operation of a satellite office. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gerhardt?
No questions.
The starting salary for sheriff's deputies, and maybe I'd have to ask Ms. Owens. Unfortunately, I missed the regional jail meeting at the end of June when Superintendent Cox came forward and had their amended, their amended budget. Were their salaries for the jailers equal to what we are doing for sheriff's deputies? Do you recall?
So their starting salary will be the $42,000, which is significantly more than where it had been. But we have historically had a differential between the comp board reimbursement and what Reno County actually pays. And so that's what we're recommending is that we have a 5% differential between the comp board reimbursement and where we would actually begin our deputies. So a little bit higher than the regional jail.
Good. Thank you.
So while we're at this slide, I guess I have to ask Chief Hall, as we are looking at the needs of the department and the, filling the gap, is this sufficient where we need to be? I mean, you know, I don't know. So I guess I'm asking as we're looking at the landscape of other departments in our region, are we, are we in the ballpark? Is money keeping someone from coming here or we, or we-
I think that moving to 46, 100 will put us a little bit ahead of the agencies in the immediate area. I'm not completely sure what, if anything, any of them have done based on the same, you know, obviously comp board increases that they're seeing. You know, as I said earlier, the applicant pool is literally a trickle. So I don't, I can't stand here and tell you that I have a number that I think is the magic number. I can tell you that I will always think the number should be higher, all right? Because I have to support our officers. And, you know, at some point, there is the price where we're going to start to bring people back in again. I don't know what that is. I think that with the new anchor at 46, 1, that puts the graduation pay 48 something when you add 4%. So that gets us a little closer, you know, Lynchburg's at 50. So now I'm kind of looking at, you know, can we inch towards that and hope that that might attract? I'm really hoping, I don't have any reason to be hopeful or not, that perhaps this will help attract a couple of certifiers in force to, to get us through.
Well, I mean, you answered my question. I just want to make sure we're, we're in the ballpark. I know last year when we pushed forward with the STEP program, we were, we were ahead of everyone else. But then I know everybody started jockeying around, raising their pay. And so I was kind of figuring where are we at now in comparison?
And, you know, that's probably going to be going on again this summer and we'll see where that, that ends up. You know, I do appreciate, you know, all the support that we have gotten from you in getting the STEP plan done this year, you know, the second year and now a bump again. I think that is extremely important to keep us competitive. And I do really believe that it has contributed to the very low attrition that we've had so far this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion.
And to schedule a second reading for July 26.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind my interruption, before you move on, just wanted to, you know, that, I just, just like I said, I got a note for the sheriff and we want to verify that starting salary for the regional jail. He believed it to actually match what we just proposed for the sheriff's officers. So we'll, we'll send you an email on that.
Right, I'll send you that.
Yeah, we want to, want to make sure we verify that because that was my understanding as well, that they too would match. But we'll verify that and follow up with you.
No, I had thought there was, like Ms. Owens, we had a, we had a little difference. Because again, we don't want to put our, our friends and partners in Franklin County and Montgomery and Salem in a difficult position. And I know we're all kind of jockeying.
Right.
But we try to keep a certain comparability, if you will, even though there may be some differences.
Again, we'll, we'll send you a formal note on that.
Number two, ordinance approving a lease agreement with Oakland Properties LLC for parking purposes at Thompson Memorial Drive and East Main Street in the city of Salem. Senior Assistant County Attorney Rachel Lauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Reno County has leased certain real property located in the city of Salem, bounded by East Main Street, Craig Avenue, Clay Street, and Thompson Memorial Drive for parking purposes for Reno County Courthouse guests and Reno County employees since May 1, 1992, at least based upon my review of our records. The current lease is with the current land owner-
I'm sure the records are perfect.
Oakland's Properties LLC. It's set to expire on July 1 of this year. In preparation for the upcoming expiration date, county staff, myself, has negotiated with Oakland's Properties LLC for a new lease of the real property for continued parking for those same purposes. The proposed lease agreement, which I've included in your board report, includes rent in the amount of $45.73 per month, with rent increasing 6% annually on August 1 of each year. Those are the same terms that we are currently, well, we're currently leasing it at a monthly charge of approximately $4,572 and some change. We negotiated that price based upon just the, the trend that we've been currently practicing at under the current lease. And the current 6% annually mimics the current lease also. The proposed lease is for an initial term of five years with an optional renewal for an additional five-year term. The proposed lease also includes a right of first refusal on any proposed sale of the lease premises. Funding for this will include the rental amounts for the term of the lease and staff recommends approval of the first reading of this ordinance and scheduling a second reading for your July 26 meeting.
Any questions?
No questions.
If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second one on July 26.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Number two, oh, I'm sorry, F1, second reading of ordinances. This F1 is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of an easement across the property owned by Technology DR1 LLC. I'm not going to read the tax net amendment. For purposes of ingress and egress to an adjacent parcel owned by Reno County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. The board owns a landlot parcel in Valley Tech Park, which is used for stormwater management purposes. Access to the county's parcel is over an adjacent parcel currently owned by Technology DR1 LLC, who has requested an amendment to a previous access easement granted to the board to establish a specific location of that easement in order to facilitate their development plans of the property. The development plans have been approved by the Department of Development Services of Reno County. And as I understand it, construction has begun. Staff recommends approval and this is the second reading.
Any questions? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve this ordinance at second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item G, appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk? If not, item H, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine, will be enacted in one resolution. Four reforms listed below, and if discussion is desired, that item could be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any member want to remove any one of the seven items on the consent agenda?
No, but I'll make a comment. It was good to hear Chief Hall talk about he'd only lost four officers, you know, and now see that two of those, which add up to 50 years of experience, two of those are retirees. So it's good to see that people are staying with us until their retirement. Also see where Mr. Parcells leaving the fire, fire rescue, had the 23 in the service. But anyway, I just make the comment that, you know, it was good to see that when, when he made a comment that only four have left the first half of the year, that we see by this, two of them are just retirements. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item I, citizen comments and communications. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests?
No, sir, I do not.
Thank you. Item J, reports. I would ask for a motion to receive and file all the reports that we have in our agenda.
Motion.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. As a follow-up to reports, item J5, I think, Mr. Peters, you would suggest that perhaps we have a-
Yeah, I'd ask that last meeting we do one for you from us.
Would we want to bring him in or is this?
I mean, I'd like to. That's okay.
I have a list of things to do.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, same here.
Great, thank you. Item K, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Radford is up first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Got one item in the consent agenda. I just want to thank Jim Waltz for re-upping for another four years. He actually replaced me on the planning commission in 2012 through another board of supervisor member. And here I am coming around as a supervisor, reappointing him as a planning commissioner.
That's awesome.
So Jim's been a great asset to our planning commission, has a wealth of real estate knowledge, and I think he will continue to do well in that position. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Just a couple of things, and I'm sure Mr. North will speak on the first one. But I'm an advocate for the Amtrak. As of yesterday, they started with their second train in the evening. So I encourage anyone who wants to get on there and go to Northern Virginia or DC, it's a great trip. I've said this throughout the years, but I, you know, I really do appreciate all the employees of Reno County. We can sit up here and legislate, but you're the ones who keep Reno County moving forward. And I think that this board has kind of put our money where our mouth is to continue with the raises and the STEP plans and everything that we've done for, for our employees. But I just want to truly say thank you to all the employees. And then I'm, my last one is on the morning of July 2nd- And then my last one is on the morning of July 2. In the town of Vinton, we did have a major fire that took out one of our historic buildings downtown. And rumor is, they're not sure whether the second structure is going to be able to stand or not, whether they're going to take it down. But I have to commend the fire and rescue personnel from Vinton. I think Station 1, I think Cave Spring sent the ladder truck. That building is something, as a fire and rescue member, we've trained on that building for 30 years. We've had all the tabletop exercises, because those buildings downtown share common basements. So because of that, that fire could have easily taken out half the block of downtown Vinton. But they did a heck of a job, probably used a million gallons of water. But they really did, I know that was a long night and a long day following, but I do want to thank all of those, all those fire and rescue folks that were there, and it was a hot day on Saturday, but they did a great job. I just want to commend them as well. Thank you.
Ms. Hooker?
I just have one comment, and I have forewarned staff that I was going to bring this up. But lately, I have heard from several citizens in my district regarding 11460 West. It's a corridor that has been improved. It's now four lanes. It has sidewalks, and we'll soon have sidewalks completed on both sides. And I would just like to see what kind of help we could offer that corridor to help meet its economic potential. While there's been some progress, we just, we need more. And I know that it's not alone. I know that there are other corridors that may need similar attention and similar help. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to request a work session at some point in the future. I know it won't be immediate, to discuss some possibilities on how can we incentivize and help some of these corridors to help their storefronts, their business fronts? What is it that we can be doing to help these small businesses grow and bring in more? And that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good suggestion, Ms. Hooker. I kind of wonder, with our Economic Development Authority, whether we might be able to partner with the EDA and with county staff to maybe come up with some plans? Because I can remember with the EDA in the past, and I think we still do, we have a grant program for signage and frontage. And I know they've done a few, I remember lots of them coming out of Vinton that have been pretty successful, up on Williamson Road and Plantation was successful. And so maybe partner that with what our Economic Development Authority is doing. And since we got a lot of good business people on the EDA, they might have some good ideas also in that.
Well, if I could interject, I would say several years ago, we had a joint work session with the EDA, and it may be something we want to revisit again, so they can actually hear what we're looking for as well and kind of brainstorming ideas.
That's a good idea. I don't know, I know we have a laundry list of future work sessions, but I'm being glared at by by certain people over in the corner.
I think we have a few little...
Well, we'll work this...
Room, we'll get you some dates.
Thank you.
You know, Supervisor Hooker brought that up. I did recall immediately, I knew we had, there was some facade grant programs in the town of Vinton, and we've made a lot of investment there in the town. And I think certainly that effort has paid off. And I think to try to take that model and look for other places around the county to apply something somewhere would be a good idea.
Exactly what I'm looking for. And I just know that with the expansion of 11460, we've got four lanes. It's ripe for development, and it hasn't happened as quickly as I would like and as I think many people expected it to. So what can we do? What can we do to expand that? And that's really my desire. Thank you.
Mr. Norworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was there along with staff yesterday at the arrival of the second Amtrak train at 1 o'clock, well attended by local dignitaries, state senators, delegates, city council. Bonita and Roanoke County were represented. The train returned at 4:30 PM, and one of the highlights of the day, and Mallon can attest to this, someone said to me, "Hey, Phil Norworth." And I said, I looked at him, and I'm like, I don't know who this person is. And it was an old college classmate from 47 years ago. So it was good to see him and renew acquaintance, as his dad also used to work at the railroad many years ago. In addition, last Thursday, I was placed on the I-81 Advisory Council, which had its first meeting to elect, in fact, its first meeting in probably about 15 months. And Secretary of Transportation Shep Miller was there, got to meet with him. And also at that meeting, we elected our chair and vice chair. And Dr. Smoot was there and placed the nomination, Terry Austin, as chair of the I-81 Committee. Terry is also the chair of the Transportation Committee and also the vice chair of the Appropriations Committee. So the second person nominated for vice chair was Delegate Tony Wilt from Rockingham County. And a well-attended meeting for the first time represented, all six planning districts along the corridor were represented. And I want to, at this time, Ms. Jacks, if you put those slides up, I want to just share with you some information that impacts us locally along the I-81 corridor. And these come from the Improve 81 Corridor Improvement Plan presentation in part. This will address the Salem District, which is where Roanoke County resides. So far, under construction are 50% of the slated projects, with 13% complete and 37% in the pipeline. The completed project is down south of us at Pulaski, exit 89, the northbound acceleration lane. Projects under construction now, as you may know, is exit 137 to exit 141, widening the northbound and southbound under design build, two projects bundled to save money in the Salem area. Troutville Rest Area is also now the southbound entrance and exit extension, two projects taking place there as well. Upcoming, in the future years, as you can tell on the slide, are several that have impacted us. Exit 128 to exit 137 widening northbound only, Ironto to Salem. You'll also notice that Christiansburg to Ironto northbound will also be widened as well. I think the southbound, as we all know, has been, especially when we go up to Blacksburg, that helps. Exit 143 to exit 150 widening north and southbound construction will start in 2026 from Rowanoke to Troutville. Next slide. Operational project status. This is something interesting that you may or may not completely know about. 78% of these operational projects corridor-wide along the 325-mile corridor have been completed. And these include curb improvements, safety service patrol enhancements, lift and tow devices on SSP vehicles, towing and recovery incentive program, which we've heard about in our code board meetings, traffic camera installations, digital message signs installations, and arterial intersection improvements, which are designed to help fluidity, especially not only on 81, but also in the other arteries paralleling 81 when there's traffic overflow. Upcoming projects are locality signal system upgrades, for example, in the 460 corridor, as well as other areas of the county and part of the state, where they can send signals from VDOT headquarters to those signals so the traffic lights stay green longer to make traffic move swiftly when there's an accident on 81 and they have to use alternative corridors. Next slide, please. On the capital project side, in the Bristol District Funding Advancement, you'll note on there a number of projects. These are also funded as well, and some of them impact other areas of the Bristol District. The Salem District is exit 128 to 137 northbound widening. Funding has been advanced by 18 months, and it's a $265 million project. So a number of projects are being moved up in the pipeline across the corridor for a total of almost $400 million. Next slide, please. These are additional projects the VDOT has begun refinement on in the next five year or five major capital improvement projects identified in I-81. And a couple of them are in the Salem District. The southbound widening on exits 137 and 128 has a preliminary range of $232 to $292 million. It's northbound and southbound realignment of the S-curves that you've heard Terry Austin speak about in the Bonita County area, mile marker 167 to 168 ranges from $180 to $220 million moving forward. Next slide, please. Anyone that has any further interest, there's a number of other slides provided on the website, improve81.org, and I'll keep you folks posted on future meetings along the I-81 corridor. Thank you.
This one item, the board may recall, we had a room full of citizens who were expressing their concerns from White Pelican, a street in Cave Spring, about a drug treatment facility. And I know our county attorney, Mr. Lubek, was looking into that. And I know Peter's out briefly this week. But I would encourage county attorney's office, so I look at Ms. Nash and Ms. Lauer, kind of assist Peter in that analysis. I think we owe the citizens in White Pelican a response. I know we're trying to get some more information from Pinnacle as to the scope and extent of what are the activities there. My understanding is some of the patients, I don't know if that's the correct term, have moved into the house on White Pelican. So it is an issue that is concerning a lot of citizens on that street. I hope we can accelerate our response to the citizens so that they get an answer one way or the other. Thank you. With that, item L. We have a work session coming up with the board, the Roanoke County School Board, and the Roanoke County Career and Technical Advisory Committee, and we have scheduled that for 5:30. And we were going to do that, this is a joint work session up on the third floor. So we are in a holding pattern for an hour. With that, you can wander up to the third floor. Thank you.